I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. Into the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Under your order.
Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for all that you've given us, all the blessings that we have here in the United States of America and in our county. And above all today, we ask first of all, that thy will be done. We ask that you, your will will be done today in our meeting, in, in every decision and in everything that we do. Lord, we ask that all decisions made today be made with grace, wisdom, and integrity. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, our next public workshop will be Wednesday, September 4th, due to the Labor Day holiday in this room. Our next regular meeting will be Thursday, September 5th, 10:30 a.m., also in this room. So because of the holiday, everything's delayed a week. Remember that for next week. Madam clerk, roll call.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated August 20th, 2024, and the regular meeting dated August 21st, 2024, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No.
Item number two is to dispense with reading the minutes of the special meeting dated August 23rd, 2024, and accept and approve the video recording of the meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
For, um, discussion, we, we really should be doing written minutes at some level. It's, um, I've had people reach out and ask for copies of the minutes and I have to tell them that they're all on video and you have to watch sometimes hours of video to see what happened at meetings. And, um, it's just, it's not okay, especially when it comes to that special meeting with something so important that the, the public, uh, wants to know about. You know, people were asking me for minutes and that this is ridiculous at this point. Plus, if, um, the action that we took, if we ever had to prove anything, you can just attach the meeting minutes and we don't have that. It's very, um, I don't think that it's user-friendly or fair to the community not to have, um, written meeting minutes. So I just want to say that. And I disagree with them, um, being done that way because even when you do have the video, the videos, um, the audio sometimes skips, there's no written transcripts that are correct. People don't speak before they, uh, because people don't state their name before they speak. And that's required if you do decide to adopt video or written meeting minutes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No.
Item number three is to approve the bills.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four is to transfer monies.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to approve additional appropriations.
A motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number six is to transfer appropriations.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seven is to receive and place on file the May, June, and July 2024 monthly financial reports for the Trumbull County Tourism Bureau.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eight is to authorize the Trumbull County Commissioners Clerk to advertise for sealed bids for railroad crossings removal project. The project includes the elimination and restoration of three at-grade railroad crossings located on Benedict Levitsburg Road and Bailey Anderson Road in Braceville Township and Deal South Road in Warren Township.
A motion approved.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nine is to concur with the county engineer to close the following roadway, York Street, County Highway 290 in Greentownship between North Park Avenue and JP Dodgeville for a culvert replacement. And the closing date, Monday, August 26th, 2024 through Friday, September 27th, 2024.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 10 is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permit requested by the company listed, Village Energy Cooperative.
A motion approved.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 11 is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits by the companies, requested by the companies listed, Wim Farms LLC and HF Everett Gas and Oil, Inc.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 12 is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Ms. Bailey Di- Dibell to the position of deputy dog warden, pay range four, zero years, 1564 per hour, with the Trumbull County Dog Kennel effective no earlier than Tuesday, September 3rd, pursuant to the authorized job postings of June 21st through Ju- July 1st, 2024.
Motion approved.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item 13 is to approve the personnel action for the transfer of Mr. Colin King from the position of plant maintenance worker, sanitary engineers department, to position of custodial worker, pay range three, five years, 1750 per hour with the maintenance department. And this is in response to an authorized job posting from July 31st, 2024 through August 8th, 2024.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 14 is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Mr. Daniel, Daniel Pro- Probonic for the position of assistant water superintendent with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department, effective August 29th, 2024, pay range 10, three years, 2742 per hour pursuant to the listed authorized job posting.
Motion approved.
Second.
Uh, I have a question about this because I, um, I see that three years of experience is added and I didn't see, um, what would qualify for that based on his resume and our guidelines. We often have, um, people who are, um, classified complaining that someone came in and, um, with additional time or that was given to them and they didn't work for government or they didn't work in the same job. And in this case, it doesn't, it looks like someone's maybe arbitrarily trying to get someone in a certain dollar amount. And I understand that some people, that in order to retain good staff at times, you need to pay them more. But at the same time, maybe that needs to be restructured so it's compliant.
Yeah, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, uh, commissioner, when it's a union position, yes, we do look at the years of P E R S that they've already worked and years of P E R S that arrive at that years. When it's an engineer or a salary or a management person, we know it's going to be a pay range 10 and we use those years of experience as part of the negotiation for a starting salary.
It's not, it's not unclassified though. It's still classified, isn't it?
It is not a union position.
But it's still classified. There's, there's, there's.
I don't, I don't know what that means, but.
Bargaining unit, employees, union, there's classified and then you have unclassified fiduciary, like fiduciary, like you, like department heads. Um, it's, it's not unclassified. He's still a classified employee, right? Yeah.
Right. So, but we do have, as far as, as far as.
That doesn't enter into it though.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, it doesn't.
Whether it's classified or unclassified.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily match up with his years of P E R S service prior P E R S when it's management. We have the flexibility to move to find an appropriate starting salary for him.
I've, I've, um, supported that when it's department heads because they're unclassified, but not for all of the rest of the county. Okay.
But that, that's, and we felt this and this is what we negotiated with them for a starting salary.
And we've been trying to fill this position for quite some time.
Then the, then maybe the guidelines need to reflect that for the county instead of just arbitrarily doing that whenever you want to pay someone more or negotiate salary. Maybe it needs to be written as such instead of just doing it this way. You know what I mean?
Typically commissioners, we do post on the job posting, uh, quantifiable with experience, years of experience. Um, it is a way to get employees into this county. Uh, obviously with non-bargaining positions, we do have that leverage. We utilized it with other employees in the past. I'm not going to, you know, go down that path. But for example, how we got our 911 director, we brought her with 27 years of experience.
She's a department head. That's the, that, that, that's the difference is unclassified or.
I, I completely understand the difference between classified and unclassified.
Okay.
However, with this being, there is a mid and a max, right? Or I'm sorry, a minimum and a maximum position for all of our pay ranges. Um, and department heads have always been empowered in the past to do what they need to do and use this as a leverage to get employees in this county, especially ones who require a civil engineering degree, on top of an EPA license, a wastewater license, so on and so forth. Um, we are in detrimental loss if we lose this position. Obviously the person is retiring. We know that. We've already lost one candidate. We had him hired. He was about to be starting and he decided not to take the job because of the pay as well as other things, personnel issues, personal issues in his life, whatever the case may be. This is a position that is going to be detrimental to this county. I feel like I have to support them in this. We need to pay people correctly to be able to get them in the door. And it's in line with their budget. I mean, there's, there's nothing that says that we can't do it. Thank you.
This is, we can, okay.
Okay, so for item 14, Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Uh, because I haven't seen anything that expressly allows this to happen and it appears to be contrary to our county, county policy without looking at that, I'd like to abstain.
Motion passes. Number 15.
Item number 15 is to establish the creation of Fund 453 for the Pendleton-Gilmer Sanitary Sewer Project, Project Number 6-S-22, to be known as Fund Number 453 for use by Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department. This fund is to be used to build a wastewater collection system. Initial funding will be provided by a $5,000 transfer from the Water Sewer Capital Project Reserve Fund, Number 477.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item 16 is to adopt a resolution declaring the necessity of constructing the Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, known as County Project Number 29-S-97 for the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District. And within the note, Thursday, October 3rd, 2024, at 7:00 p.m., is hereby fixed as the time in Le Bre High School Auditorium located at 1001 North Levitt Road, Levitsburg, Ohio, as the place of hearing objections to or acceptance of this project.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item 17, um, resolution authorizing Denny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the County of Trumbull for planning, design, and/or construction of the Vizzetta and Mecca wastewater treatment plants nutrient reduction project number 8-S-20.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 18 is a resolution authorizing the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to apply for, accept, and enter into a project year 2025 water pollution control loan fund agreement for the repair and replacement of home sewage treatment systems.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes, and, um, or number 19, the dollar amount should be listed because this is, um, this is a request. It, it, it's written, um, it should say, instead of up to, it should say the exact amount, which is 7,135. So I would ask that that be read that way.
Where'd you get that figure?
From the agenda item and the backup information and the presentation at the workshop, Denny. And because this is, uh, it's not just like a letter of support where you say up to or whatever. This is an actual amount with the budget that was attached and that was the amount of the, on the budget item. So it should say the amount. This was sent over and, um, I tried to send it last night. Our email wasn't working, so. It's not something. Correct it. I mean, should I read it to make a motion to request at the Board of, I moved to make, I'm making a motion and it shouldn't say to request. When these are, when these are coming in, you know, the, the clerk has them written, but she still needs to do a little bit of thinking associated with making it on the agenda as an agenda item would be. So motion to, uh, approve the Board of Commissioners to commit, uh, $7,135 from the general fund as part of the required local match for the Clean Ohio Green Space Conservation Green Application to be submitted by the Trumbull County Planning Commission on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners through the Ohio Public Works Commission Portal on or before September 13th. Uh, Trumbull County's purpose for applying for the Clean Ohio Green Space Comfort Conservation Grant is to acquire, restore, and preserve parcel of land in Champion Township and to ensure no further development occurs on that parcel located in the floodway. That should have been the special note.
Motion dies for longer a second.
Are you serious?
I see in here also it says the estimated total. I don't want to hamstring them by giving a, a figure in here and that's not the actual estimate on the day that they submit the request.
It actually, it actually has to, you're making the, they're making the application.
Can we read the agenda item of what's, that failed for lack of a second.
Have to insert the, the dollar amount, so. Uh, how about a motion to table it so that someone from planning could explain that to you? I don't know that you've ever submitted a grant.
Don't read it as.
Item number 19 is to request that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners commit up to $10,000 from the general fund as part of the required local match for the Clean Ohio Green Space Conservation Grant Application, being submitted by the Trumbull County Planning Commission on behalf of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners through the Ohio Public Works Commission Portal on or before September 13th, 2024.
Motion approved.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion. Is, is anyone from planning on the phone? Because I know that whenever you're presenting your application, you have to have the supporting documentation that shows the actual dollar amount. I mean, maybe even, um, maybe even Mike can speak to the validity of what I'm saying because I know he's presented, submitted applications as have I. I'm, I'm.
Is anybody on the phone from planning?
I'm telling you, I'm an elected official.
All right, I'm, I'm asking if anyone's on the phone from planning. It's star six if you're available, Julie or Nick, if anyone's on the phone from planning.
I'm just telling you with my expertise and background and, and doing similar.
Well, you claim to have expertise in about a thousand areas and you have to prove it.
Okay, so I, I know you're very familiar with, um, guns, uh, but this is something that I've actually, uh, worked on before, so.
Nobody on playing, call the question.
No one on planning, okay.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
I'm going to abstain because I don't think this is done correctly. I don't, I hope that this is.
Motion passes.
Because of this, um.
Item number 20 is to receive and place on file. Talk the July.
Vote's done. Discussion's done. Vote's done.
I'm explaining the rea- anytime, when someone is abstains, Mr. President, point of order.
Already did your explanation. You did your explanation during discussion.
No, you don't. You, you have, you have to have the opportunity by, by the constitution, by, um, the Roberts Rules of Order to explain the reason for your abstention. And you clerk should know that. So you need to stop and not talk when other people are, okay? Um, so when you submit an Ohio, um, Clean Ohio Green Space Conservation Grant Application, uh, to the OPWWC, you have to put in exact dollar amounts and your, um, and your journal action should reflect that. And so I'm concerned about the application passing an audit if the, their monitors come in.
You can be concerned. You know the auditor's phone number by heart. I'm sure you can turn it in and.
I don't think you understand. There are monitors that review your paperwork associated with the department from the state that you're submitting an application. Like, you've never done that before.
Motion passes. Number 20, please.
Item number 20 is to receive and place on file the July 2024 monthly operating financial report for Trumbull County Transit and the Western Reserve Transit Authority.
A motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 21 is to notify Buckeye Energy Brokers LLC in writing that Trumbull County opts out of the automatic renewal of its agreement for energy aggregate services and will terminate the agreement at the end of the agreement term. This written notification is being made prior to the six-month advance notice required by the current agreement.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 22 is to appoint attorney Blake Beachler and the firm of Caffey, Halter, and Griswold, LLP, pursuant to RC 309.09C and RC 305.14B as counsel for the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners to provide legal research, advice, and consulting relating to financial matters concerning the proposal to pledge county funds or credit to potential purchasers of facilities currently owned by Stewart Health.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Okay, that concludes the regularly scheduled agenda items for today. Do we have any issues from the board?
Uh, yes. One of the things relates to the coroner and the, um, more, um, the person who makes the top salary in Trumbull County, um, that was hired and paid that much. I heard yesterday that there is a, uh, that his, the coroner actually suggested that he be paid additional money, um, if they were to enter an agreement. We should not be paying additional money. Him being paid that salary, um, is what he should be paid. Nothing additional. The effort should be for him to continue to work and recapture money to help with, uh, expenses in that department, um, no different than what, um, family court does with their jail. People don't get more money, um, under base pay or salary as a result of.
More work.
Yeah, because it's part of their salary. It's part of their, their position. So it.
The coroner has yet to produce, to present a plan. He was asked to present a plan.
If he has to work overtime or something like that, that's a different story. But already his plan is that, and I just want to caution the board because you could be looking at like a, what, what he's suggesting, like a $200,000 a year salary. Like, that's just absurd. So anyway, I just wanted to give my opinion on that. Um, and then the other thing is it's, it's not going to happen with the, um, utilities, uh, being negotiated by, um, with our, with auditor and, um, uh, Medical Properties Trust. They, they are, uh, re- they are, um, it's, it's a Ponzi scheme. They, they already don't pay their bills. You could follow what they're, what, what is going on all across the United States. Um, I've been looking into, uh, what's been going on across the country. That's not going to happen. So I'm worried about the potent, the, uh, main- maintaining utilities for our 911 center. And I think that the board needs to, um, seriously consider taking action to make sure that we have utilities there because they are about as unsavory of a company as Stewart Health. And the, the, um, CEO of Stewart has an interest in MPT and the place in Panama that's providing their, um, insurance for the, um, for the doctors, the malpractice. This is not a good situation, obviously. But, um, I think that we can't, we, after I heard the meeting, I did even additional research. There are not, I don't think that it's wise at all. These, these are groups that don't pay their, that don't pay their bills. And, um, I don't want to risk, even if they were to enter an agreement, them not paying it and then leaving us over there without utilities. So I don't know if there are other avenues aside from. So I don't know if there are other avenues aside from that expensive one, but I think we need to really think about jeopardizing the safety of our residents here in Trumbull County by trying to work out an agreement with someone who's just not known for doing what's right.
And I don't remember at any time during yesterday's meeting, us talking about working an agreement on the owner of the property.
No.
The only thing we wanted to work out was with the electric company to put the power in our name.
No.
I don't know what meeting you listened to.
That's what was said, Denny?
By who?
By, by the auditor, she talked about.
Negotiating with the electric company.
No, it was negotiating with Medical Properties Trust, go back and listen to it, you were there. Medical, that's what I, that's what I heard, that's what everyone heard. It was between Medical Properties Trust and then so that, so that the county would be able to pay them. Or you're not going to be.
No, that's not how, that's not at all what's going on.
That's not, you are.
You are way off.
Meeting, you shouldn't have asked it listening.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, currently, currently, we pay Stewart. What I suggested, and no decision has been made, is that I researched the ability for us to have all the utilities in our name in order to maintain utilities at 911. My suggestion would be to reverse what we're doing currently, where we are paying Stewart and have whoever ends up owning that building pay us would not be. Now, the other, the other, right, I understand that.
I heard what you said, yes.
I understand it.
Different than what you're saying today, but.
It is, yeah, well, that's, maybe you need to listen better, anyway.
And that's still to be determined by the federal bankruptcy judge on who is responsible for the bills, utilities.
I'm not making any negotiations at all. Currently, I'm investigating what our options are. That's what I was authorized by the majority of the board to do, that's what I will be doing. Tomorrow I am meeting at, at 911 with Tacey, Patty, and Alex. And we will be talking about that, we will also bring Danzo in. Nothing, nothing has been decided that we're doing. I, you know, as someone who's here more than two hours a week, I spent a lot of time last week working on this, a lot.
Okay, that's not, it's, but I just want to be clear that, that the suggestion of that, which, which did come up yesterday to work with them.
It did not, it did not. There's three people telling you it did not, and there's more than that, and probably in this room that were at the meeting, that could tell you the same thing.
Okay, that's what I heard.
Well, you heard wrong. Any other, any other issues from the board? Okay, anything from the public out there? I know we have some guests here, it looks like.
Good morning, Commissioners, Tim Haniford, I am the Deputy Audit with Trumbull County. Wanted to pass out some information concerning the power at the, for the new Marx Tower out in Brookfield. The last Wednesday, I met with the team that, from Ohio Marx that is installing the tower along with First Energy. First Energy has presented two possible scenarios for us to consider that they, they are willing to start working on. Part of that is concerning Ohio Marx, because they're, they need to get power to, to the, the new Marx Tower out there, but they're willing to work with us, which, with whatever, whichever solution we decide to go with. Before I begin, we're going to be talking easements a little bit. There are two different types of easements that are in play right now. Property easement for the property owner around there that he currently does not have. And there's also utility easements that First Energy is going to require that is going to, going to be for them to be able to maintain, to install and maintain the electrical service and also an aerial easement that is going to be used for maintaining the overhead power lines. So, and then one point, and it's right at the top of this sheet that I want to stress on this, any cost that is presented here is an estimate. Once we get our plan in place, we, we, we initiate with, with First Energy, they will present their costs. These are all estimates that they've been able to give us. The current factor is in place, the county owns and maintains all of the power lines and poles that are in that location. Anything that we do will have to go ahead through. I know Audit Yoder has been researching whether we can use ARPA funds to go ahead and remove those poles, because it is considered part of an ARPA project. She can speak more on that if there are questions on that.
I want to say, if it's, if it's utility and if it's replacing it, it's an enumerated use, so that's perfectly good, yeah.
I don't, I don't think that's the issue, it's if we have to appropriate more funding.
We have to, so before he, I'll, I'll go ahead and address the, the ARPA part of this really quickly. So, whatever we do that's related to the Marx Tower can be included in that project. So, that's necessary, so I've already, the, the power itself, the, the cost that we're going to talk about for the power to get to the Marx Tower, I've already spoken with Attorney Rogers, that's fine. The only thing that I hadn't gotten to discuss was the demo of the old, the demo and removal of the old poles. Probably will be, but I need to verify that with her. With regard to, we have 875,000 budgeted for this project. We have a cushion within that 875 with, which almost everything we're talking about will fit into that or should fit into that with regard to the, if the demo of the power of the tower, of, sorry, demo of the poles is what we need to do for the tower, that's, we have enough for that, we have enough to, based on the estimates, to do the actual power itself. That for sure, we know is, 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 we're able to include it in the project and we have the money for it. The only part of this that we're going to talk about, that we know for sure the county will have to cover out of our own funds, is power back to the Clear Channel Radio Tower, and it has to be done. And it's $15,000, which isn't a whole lot, we currently get $1,000 a month from Clear Channel. I do need to investigate the current lease to see if there's a provision where we can bill them for this, but I don't have that information yet. Again, in the grand scheme of things, 15 grand is not that much, it's something we have to do. We also may be able to renegotiate the lease or something like that, but that's to be determined. Most of this is related with the ARPA project.
Okay, so on the map, I'm looking at it, can you explain where, the locations of the proposed utilities and in proximity to the injection location?
So I, I can explain that.
As we go through. Because you want to go through the options and he'll, he'll note that, okay?
So, to kind of give, give kind of a little lay of land to start off with, the water tower is the white circle up in the top left corner of, of the county property. And the Marx Tower is directly across from that, on the other side of that road. The injection well, and I'll go ahead and.
Is it within the, within the?
Yes.
Within the?
Within the, the yellow area.
Okay, within the yellow, okay.
Yes.
With.
Everything, excuse me, everything within the yellow is property owned by.
Our property. Okay.
Yes.
So that's our, okay.
The injection well that we're talking about is right in that location right there, across from that road.
The circle up there?
No, 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 the, the, just up a little bit higher.
By those little, okay, by those circles, okay, this.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's where that well is at. Currently, there's no, the required power is not being run back there. That's one of the reasons why for the discussion that we had. And one of the things that we need to decide to, or at least very, very soon, is which direction we're going with this. First Energy has been contacted by Select Water Solutions, they are the, the, the injection well people that are actually doing the work back there. They have a plan put in place that they had thought, you know, that they, they, they were told there was an easement, they worked with First Energy, money has exchanged hands somewhere along the line with, between Select Water Solution and First Energy to get a plan started. And then First Energy is also going to be running three-phase power to, to our site. So it's, what, a, a, anything we, we have will be able to run on that three-phase power. We have two options in play right now. Option A is for, is for Trumbull County and Ohio Marx will split the cost of running the, the, the three-phase power to, to the, to, to the right of way of, from State Route 7 to approximately 50 feet from the Marx Tower, so basically it's going to run, run directly up to the tower. First Energy will place poles along the south side, north being the top, south being the bottom, along the south side of McMullen. And.
Can you point to that, please?
Yes.
Or, or.
Gary, you don't have your pointer, do you, by chance?
I can see your little cursor, oh, she's got it, never mind, okay.
Yeah, that's, where, where she's running that, that's along the south side of McMullen.
Okay.
Okay. So, one of the considerations that was put in place was that during a certain period of time, potentially up for two, to two days, power will be out at the water tower. Ohio Marx has reached out to us, said that they are willing to get us a generator to be able to power that tower. So, so we shouldn't have issues with the water tower for, for any, any part of this project. Forty percent of the power to the site would be the responsibility of Trumbull County and Ohio Marx to split the cost. So right now, this, this is just between these two parties. Total cost of electrical power from State Route 7 to the end of the right of way would be 40%, which is estimated at 35,000, so, so it'd be 17.5 between each of the parties. In addition, the county will be responsible to run additional power back to the Clear Channel Radio Tower. Now I'm going to point that out, that's towards the bottom of that yellow area, okay? So that's going to.
She's good back there.
Yes.
Thank you.
So that, that's going to run additional 15,000 for that. Once again, an approximate amount. First, First Energy is going to require their, their, their utility easements for, to be able to, to run the lines, maintain the lines, and the aerial easements to, to hang the power overhead. Option B. Option B is, would, would split between Trumbull County, Marx, and the, the, the service that's out there for the injection while Select Water Solutions. The lines and poles would, would remain property of First Energy as with the option A. And any new lines or requests for service would go between First Energy and the service requester, which right now is Select Water Solutions. All poles would be run along the north side. Now, these have already been staked out, out there, this was the solution that Select Water, Select Water Solutions and First Energy have worked out. They're going to run along the north side of that road. Now, the, the, this is where, where the property easement would come into play, because they want to run power back from McMullen, across county property back to the injection well site. All new poles and wires would be run to, to service the water tower, Marx Tower, and the Clear Channel Tower with the additional cost to the Clear Channel Tower being on to the county. The cost would, the, the cost through this option would be 30,000, then split between the county and Ohio Marx. Again, the county would be responsible for running the power back to the Clear Channel Tower. First Energy will require utility easement, we discussed that for access. And then also, the property easement would need to be put in place. We do not have that, we do, as far as we are under the understanding, we do not have a formal request for that easement. So basically, what, what I'm here for, you know, to, to discuss is we need to decide which way we're going to go. Now, there is also the no trespassing letter that was sent out, I believe, Friday, if that, that's correct. Yeah, but that, that, that was said, decided last week, and that was sent to the property owner, two, two weeks ago.
Essentially, that would, option B would make that cease and desist letter null and void.
Correct, correct. So that's, that's why I'm here today, Bracy, to present those two for the board to decide which direction we're going to go, either option A or option.
On the back, you have when these options can start.
Yes, and that, that is one consideration. Ohio Marx has told us they'll work with us either way. If we go with option B, option B can, will, will start here very soon, within the next week or so. Option A, it will require a new contract to be written up, a payment that, that we're going to have to pay to, to First Energy, and then also to a, the, the, the plans that may need to be done, poles would need to be set and all that. So that's, that's going to take time, possibly won't start till November.
If option.
Parks is, is on board either way.
Like that was my question, is Ohio Marx okay with starting in November?
Yes.
Okay. I, I, I've been very clear on my stance on this from the very beginning, and, and I'll maintain that. I think option A is, is what the county needs to do. I don't want to be a part of facilitating anything with that. There's millions of dollars of infrastructure there, there's a school right by there. This is nothing against that business owner in particular, but it's against what, what is going into the ground and the unknown. And that's where I stand.
And with option B, they'll be able to access and use our property, which.
Well, they would need to, we would need to have an easement drawn up, and we're not even sure of the legality of that at this point, too.
Yeah.
That type of easement for them.
But essentially.
Yeah.
We would be facilitating that action.
Well, at, at the same time, when you, when you're drawing up an easement, sometimes the property, when you have the ability to, to dictate who's responsible for things, if they want access, they're a little bit more negotiable, but at the end of the day, it's, it's our property. And an easement would allow someone to utilize our road, you, you, you know, even though some of that stuff could be fixed, corrected in the negotiation.
And keep in mind as well, when we say that it could start, and I just, actually, this just actually occurred to me right now, even though we've gone over this several times. If, even though they could start and we would need to do that easement, we don't know for sure how quickly we could do that, and we don't know for sure the legality of it. What we really want today is to know what the majority of the board would like us to do going forward with this, so that we can start movement.
Is it dictated the type of property easement, like, do they already have a, a format of, of one where like you split?
We have not received any.
From?
From us, Select Water, not at all. They've talked about it, but we've not received.
I don't like that, I don't like.
Quite frankly, it's been explained to them precisely what we need to have.
And they haven't provided.
They haven't, and it was done, quite frankly, by Attorney Toad, who is very clear.
Well, and at, at, at one time, were they not saying they had an easement, and that didn't turn out to be?
It, it was, it's been our impression that they believed that there was an easement in place before they started this process.
No, it would be on your, on your paperwork for purchase, your purchase agreement would be on your, your title work.
Investigated and no one has produced anything.
Yeah, it would have, it would be explicit on your.
And as we.
Closing documents.
We would like to get this started, we do, we are up against the time, we don't, we don't, especially if you're going to go with option A, because we don't want to delay it, you know, we have, that gives us time, but we still, you know, there's a lot to put in, in play there. So either this week or next week, we really need to get this addressed.
All right, let me put my two cents where it's, so option A would cost us more money, and it would be a delayed in start of it. Option B would be less money, it would start immediately, and it would allow us to use the power of government to put the screws to an individual, because we don't like the businesses in. We can, and, and I know Commissioner Kim Lays has said he doesn't like to facilitate, I don't like to discriminate either.
You just said option B would be sooner, we'd be putting the screws?
No.
No, it's, option B is.
Sooner.
Sooner, and it, it would facilitate it.
Right.
That's not what you said, but, but, but also I want to take, just.
What I'm saying is, we would pay more money and take an option just to put the screws to an individual landlord.
I want to say, I want to respond to that as, as a member of.
You're saying the power of government.
Wait, I'm going to explain that as a, as a member of the, I'm sorry, it's, it's. It's it's not, it's not putting the screws to someone. It's actually protecting our property and our on our asset.
We're the ones that are standing to build a water tower next to an active injection well.
Excuse me, the water tower was there first.
No.
I'm sorry, the Mark Tower, Mark Tower.
It's still not even active. It hasn't been active.
It's been drilled already.
But it's not, it's
There's no permit.
There's no permit.
It was permitted before.
No, it's never been permitted for use. It was permitted for construction.
Right.
There's there are two different kinds of
Completely different.
It's not permitted for that.
I I guess, can I say something? It it matters what we what I I know, I understand where Commissioner Malloy's coming from, but what message are we sending to the community? What message are we sending to Brookfield?
The government is fair and gonna stay out of their lives.
Well, let me finish, let me finish. That that we stand with ODNR, who who regulates these things, who actually gets a profit uh from these injection wells. So how they're able to regulate them, I have no idea. Or are we gonna stand with our local citizens that by and large are against this? It it comes down to that.
So is this about injection wells or is this about an easement for property for business?
Explain for, it sounds like for Commissioner Cantal Mesa, it's about the injection well. It sounds like for you, it's for promoting the business. And for me, it just comes down to um basically protecting uh the county's property, which um I think that's where the auditor's coming from, too. You know, it's it's not, we don't have any of the paperwork. There's there's no easement. There's been a lot of um shenanigans from what I can see, saying that that they have certain documents that don't exist, that they can't produce, and trying to stop things. And I think there's to be responsible as government, we need to watch out for the road there. We need to watch out
It'll be torn up.
For our, exactly. We've seen what happened over at the um fairgrounds during the COVID vaccines.
All hours of the day.
It doesn't have to be our road. He's the offer, he's offered to extend the road and build his own road.
Our road, and and I wanna also point out that with two things, and and I know that Trustee Settles is back here, but two things I would like to point out. The difference in prices twenty-five hundred, I guarantee you the damage done by to our road is going to be more than that. Second, we talk about it being a more timely thing, although Ohio Edison says that that they can start next week. When we ha- talk about having the legal easements in place, those do take time. So that timeline is what Ohio Edison can do, not necessarily what we can do legally.
Plus, we don't even have that. You know, they're talking about something that needs to be maybe produced or constructed or reconstructed or negotiated, and I just think that we need to be responsible. I re- I first started here um during the COVID vaccines over at the fairgrounds, and it was a disaster just by having you, we all see, yes, the engineer, you know, what happens to roads when they're used with heavy vehicles. And we just need to be responsible as commissioners for our property. I understand that these two have different opinions, but I am agreeing
No, I share that opinion.
Uh I I get it, but I I am agreeing with Commissioner Cantal Mesa. We need to protect um the the area. And if we need to take a vote on it, I would like to make um just so that it's formal. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I I I really appreciate you giving me
Name first, please.
My name's Dan Salos, trustee from Brookfield Township. I really appreciate you giving me the opportunity. I know this is your business. We're we're involved, but this is up to you to make those decisions.
You should be here.
And and I appreciate you involving us. And one thing I wanna point out, maybe it's not a big deal, but above where where McMullen is at the top, you also own property from the end of the road all the way over. There's another parcel that's yours that we that I provided as match, you know, where McMullen ends going south, you own another parcel of property that whether that matters or not, that that seems like like putting the telephone lines on the north or the electric lines on the north side, he's like going around the property. He's still going through your other property, which which would be at the end of the road uh then at McMullen. But that's just the point, because that's what I provided when there's three parcels there involved that the county owns. Uh and that's the second one.
Two parcels plus the county road.
Okay, yes, that's what I was referring to.
Yeah, there's a, there's a reason why uh another injection well company came, looked at it and decided not to buy it, you know, because of the difficulty.
Thank you. And 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 where we stand, and I appreciate, once again, of both sides of this discussion, and I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Malloy, it appears that uh there may be because of what this company is, what it's gonna do. Um and I'm coming to you asking for the people of Brookfield, is that this is our community. And I know that I I certainly are not breaking the law, but I want you to take our eighty-seven hundred people that live there in our school district and 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 the thought when when you make a decision, because these are the people that we live there, and that you're right, I am, I am against injection wells for the same reasons Commissioner uh Canham Lacer brought up. They're gonna pump this stuff, and I've been, I've talked about it before, this high pressure liquid underneath our residents when they're sleeping. It scares me as a as a trustee that I take the safety of my citizens at heart. I wanna make sure that I can do everything I can to protect them. So I plead with you regardless of, I don't wanna uh get in between the fact whether an injection well is right or wrong, that you have that stance, but think of my citizens. They're your citizens, too. They're Trumbull County citizens, but they live in my community, and I live within a couple miles of that place myself. Our schools are right there. Please take that into consideration. I'd appreciate it if you would, because this will affect the citizens of Brookfield every day.
And I
I I
I wanna say that even if we just, even if Commissioner Malloy disagrees fundamentally with that, one thing that we can't ignore, whether we're Republican, Democrat, Independent, if we're elected, even if we disagree with something, we can't ignore the concerns of the community. And I thank you for coming here and presenting your concerns.
And and I share those same concerns of the community. I don't like out of state waste coming into my county either. I I don't like that at all. There's some people out there don't like gun ranges. There's some people out there don't like a lot of businesses out there. And but I think as government, as county commissioners, I don't think we should go out of our way to inflict our personal views on a citizen and use the power of government to stop a citizen from the American way, from expressing capitalism.
How is that happening?
We have a well that was already built there. It's already drilled. We decided to put a Marx Tower up next to it. It's like somebody moving in next to a public hunting area in Farmington and then saying, I don't want hunting. There's a guy walked by my house with a gun on the other side of the fence. I don't want that. He moved in that area.
It's not the same.
Hear me out. I have a floor now. The injection well was there. It was permitted before. It went away for whatever reason. You know, or will or well drilling went other areas, the company that had it before. I don't know what the the situation is there. Apparently, Select Water, this this company is going through to get the permit. ODNR is gonna give them the permit. They've already contacted the power company. They're probably gonna run a wa- a power line anyway on the north side of the road with or without us. They don't have to share the cost with us. They could still run this power to their property. They could still have a road that comes around to this property. We may not be able to stop that, but why should we go out of our way as government officials to use our power of government so big brother government can squash a citizen? We all hate that. When the when the feds do it, when Mill Creek Park was trying to eminent domain and take people's farms so they can put a bike trail, these issues have come up, and people don't want government in their lives. They don't want government use abusing their power to on on a citizen. That's where my stance is on this is if it's his property, we we are neighbors with this property over here. We can express our viewpoints. We could protest. Commissioner Camelace and Commissioner French, who could stand on McMullen Road with signs, no injection wells. God bless them if they wanna do that, but to use their power as a government official to use the power of, no, no, county roads, to use the power of a government official to say, well, we can do this, because we're the government. We could put the screws to you, because we have the power and we're gonna use it. And we're gonna spend more money than what it would cost for electricity, and we're gonna go out of our way to make sure that we hurt you. I think it opens us up not only for lawsuit, but I think there's citizens out there, if they were in the same boat, don't want government in their lives. They want government out of their lives. And that's where my stance comes from.
Unless they're a hospital.
Bought that, right, unless they're a hospital, right? And you can
If I could.
But they they bought that knowing that there was nothing there. So that's the difference. Is that it's a free country. You have the right to do what you wanna do, purchase pro- property wherever, but at the same time, you if if he failed or someone failed, I'm sorry, it's love, to understand the dynamics of the property and how they were going to get what they needed in order to accomplish the permitting process uh then that's on them. And the other thing that I'm thinking, if he does go around somewhere else and bring electricity, that could be an avenue for someone who lives even further out to access electricity from another place, which may be good for your community, you know?
And two things. One is, there was a problem, and and I don't, I I said last time, I didn't wanna elaborate, because I don't know what the problem was. I've been trying to find out from other trustees in the past. There was a problem with that well, where they they didn't just say the industry's changed and we're gonna vacate. They had a problem with the pressurization, there's some caves in the area. And once again, I'm I'm not real, I don't know the specifics. So that's a red flag. And in in a sense of, you don't wanna single out a person. I also think my view of government officials is, if you can benefit the majority of your people and offend one other person uh for their safety and stand behind those people, that's also what government's here to do, is to protect our citizens. And I understand if it was uh something that wasn't controversial, it may not be an issue right now, but it is. And we have to realize that and say, yeah, I'm taking a stance and as a as a government official, I wanna protect people opposed to uh benefiting one person to put a business in. That's just my perspective.
And I I just think, I just think the whole deal's, when you got a guy who was freely allowed to utilize our property, was given a key, worked to get a gate up there for twelve years, and then one day we decide, nope, you're a bad guy today, and after twelve years of allowing this? And now, it doesn't look like we're singling him out.
That's that's a, that's not, you know, you're
It doesn't look like we're singling him out at all.
You're writing the the facts, the history, Denny, by that statement, because we were all here.
Do you see all the buildings all the way down next door road? Those are his barns. He's utilized those barns for twelve years. Using our road to do it.
I seriously
He's not gonna be, what are you talking about?
Commissioners, I'm just gonna, with all due respect, I I think um we're, we've, I think everybody's had their say.
Yes.
And and I would just like a decision.
Yeah, and and I wanna say one more thing, ca- because I wanna bring this up to to Commissioner Cantal Mesa. As you uh uh referenced how the permitting process and you see a problem with that, just think about code enforcement, too, you know, because that's another thing, where we've got people that were paying in the county to go out and uh um basically ticket people who are making improvements at their houses, and then they get permits and they have to get money, and that goes back to funding their positions. You know, just I I suggest not speaking out of both sides of your mouth, but it's anyway, I'd just like to make a motion um that we approve.
I I have no idea what that meant.
That's okay.
I don't either.
Because that has nothing to do with this discussion.
Parking enforcement, oh well.
About uh building permits. Okay.
That has nothing to do with it.
Right. Uh, those who understand will understand.
She hates siding with her so bad, Maro. And she just hates it inside. It's just oozing out of her. She just their stomachs flipping siding with you right now.
No, actually, it's not.
Okay, let's let's
I think I think we've discussed this enough. I think we've made our
Sit up, sir.
Without without um continuing the discussion.
Go ahead.
I'm for I'm for option A. We don't have to make a motion.
No, I have to verbally tell her. To to have that
That is not required.
Okay, I wanna make a motion um that the Trumbull County pursue option A for electrical services uh for the Marx Tower power project.
I'll second it, but for future discussion, when two commissioners say that in a public meeting, that's it.
Ms. French, co?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Abstain.
Uh you have to give a reason for abstaining.
Abstain because I think we are abusing the power of government to single out and discriminate against the taxpayer.
Then that sounds like a no. I mean, it
It's an abstain.
I have not seen the contracts for it. I think there's a plan C in here that could be brought into instead of A or B.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh Mr. Hannah Folder will continue to pursue it. Thank you.
Great.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Kay. You've been patiently waiting back there. While we're on the topic of property rights and citizens' rights. You have to state your name and all that for the record as you hear the objections at the beginning of the meeting.
Morrison, War Township trustee. Uh I have a letter for each of the commissioners from the uh trustees Anthony and Yoho and myself in regards to the dam removal and some information that you'll probably have to share or run copies, because I didn't have time to do that. So again, I wanna thank you for giving the money for that. I I watched your meeting yesterday, seemed to go well. Everybody's rethinking, hopefully. So I'll just give you these.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kay.
Thank you. And there's one more thing that I wanted to suggest, and that is a special meeting um for the purpose of reviewing the final ARPA applications. We had some that were um questions, some were that were approved and some that just came in. And I think that, given the situation with um Stuart Hill and um the other applicants, we need to go back over all of them um and a- actually decide which ones we're going to move forward on um with the with the list, with the applications. There aren't a lot, so it won't be a very long meeting. Um and then make our decision so we can see how much would be left. I would like to reevaluate those final ones. Does anyone want to do that together as a as a group?
On which day?
I don't care what day.
I agree that we need to do that, but I think we need to have a special meeting first about the dam, as we stated in the last dam meeting, that we need to reassemble to review the servant, the the study that we paid good money for, that we need to sit down and review the study with the trustees and Levitts in uh More Township and with our park board. We need to come up with a date and do that first. I think this takes precedent over that at this moment.
I didn't say that as it it's as precedent. It was just in my notes to bring up today.
Yeah, we've brought that up at workshops, too.
So I I think this is the the thing we need to deal with immediately, because there's money waiting to be spent, money being spent as we speak uh on the on the dam removal. So we need to address this first and foremost. You have, Otter Yoder, do you have something regarding the dam thing?
Regarding what she just suggested, uh Otter Yoder, um the the sheet that you just got yesterday and and the notes that you got do explain what we've got left pending what's on the yes list, right? Um and the Commissioners also authorized everything that's that's down to on that list. Everything that's down to that list has been sent, either sent to um Attorney Rogers or is frozen money that the Commissioners have promised.
Um.
Um and so there's a few things on it that are not that way. There are also things that are on her desk that she's working on that may be denied, that may give us some more money.
Do you have that list with you? Can I wanna grab mine real quick?
Sure, I have it with me.
I also think at this time, too, with the hospital pending situation, I I don't think we can meet and go over these things, because we don't know if we're gonna need to use ARPA money not for that.
That's my
That's hanging over our heads until we decide.
Kinda know what we have. So I mean, and and I understand we have things on the maybe list, but I I think if you guys are dead set on using ARPA, if it's available and you are, you're gonna have to probably say some no's with the things. These are the things that you all have voted on to be prioritized, right? What's here is what's you've you've given the
I hope we're in that situation that we need to pony up money.
Yes, right? But the tentative yeses are all what are on here, and the thing that's just, I'll review very carefully, very close or um very quickly some things that we've talked about so that uh because I know that you haven't always been at at the the workshops, and I haven't, I sometimes present here and sometimes present there. So we have Hubbard Township, um there's uh seventy-six thousand that's frozen, and Gus Davis Township has a little less than forty thousand frozen. That's money that you have at least verbally committed to those two entities. At this time, per the last couple of workshops, um Julie Green is working with them to try to find eligible requests. Yeah.
I was gonna say, I can help, because that's one of the things that I was working with some of the communities um to present them in a way that it's eligible. Um and I wanted to ask about inspiring minds. Was that a very, very large ask?
I I don't know off the top of my head. I don't have the the maybe list.
Two million dollar ask.
That's the one I wanted to look at, because I I believe that it related to remodeling and the um the capital improvements
That would
Are not
Right, that's on the maybe list. That's not something that you
It's not, okay.
It's not, it's not on, it's not on this list at all. This is the tenant, the one you have in your hand is the tentative uh yes list, the only, the The only, the other list that we have a pending request are maybe requests and then we have what's been promised and allocated. Um, the Farmington Township, Methpo Township are both in, in, in the works with the county engineer to do that, what we did with Vernon. The Zeta is further down um or further down that road, no pun intended. Um, with the county engineer, we're working on agreements with um Attorney Rogers.
See.
The, those that are in the orange are um all on her desk.
Okay. So what I'm thinking is that um since we, we don't know what's going on with Stewart, but since we have the ability and, and I know that we could, we all know now, um also because on page 14 of the interim, the last interim final rule, it's, it, it shows that it's a enumerated use basically for, for Stewart if we were going to use that. But if we were um, some of these, we could actually use with county funds. Because if they're, if they're, you know, culverts or roads or whatever, that's, I just kind of wanted to look at them all again one more time. I hope you under.
I understand it. Okay. But, but, and it's fine, but we have, these are, the maybes, honestly, if you're going to use ARPA funds, they're off the table. That's.
We'll know by the end of the week. So this is a moot point. Now we can discuss this next week.
We have, what, just to give you one more, one more thing, what we have is just under, well, now, because we got that, we added that 15,000. So we're just over $800,000 available funds with if everything on this list is finalized along with what we have allocated and promised. We have just over 800,000. There are things that on this may be the established as ineligible. I don't know that. The only thing on this list that you have that we know is off of this list for sure is the Hubbard City request for 15,000. They withdrew that request. The, the board, the majority of the board yesterday decided not to freeze any money because they just got 300.
Which one was not the?
The Hubbard City, the 15 grand.
Wait, I can't.
It's at the bottom of the first page, the bottom of the first page.
This one.
Okay, I see.
Yeah. So that's why I'm saying it's just over 800,000 because when we add that back in.
And then I've been working with some of the communities for some of the ones that are ineligible, just because they're being praised wrong when they're submitted. So the communities that were, that we're working with.
Those in blue are the only ones that we have frozen money for, that the commissioners have frozen money. Anything else that's been denied, either the commissioners de- declined to freeze money because they already had enough or the, they've stepped out. The, one of the things that's still on here um is quite frankly Bristol Township ambulance, 175,000. We'll see. We don't have that back on her desk yet. That's in the white at the bottom of the second page. But, but at this point, going back and reviewing the maybes is very premature and just my opinion. And I think we should kind of sit tight and see what Tanya comes up with, with some of these, or I'm sorry, Attorney Rogers comes up with, with some of these that are on her desk. And then you guys can decide, hey, okay, we want to, we do want to freeze money or we want to put it aside for the hospital. That's going to be a few. The other option or the other part of this is the, the eligibility of the opioid money. Because if, you know, if we have a bigger pot of that, that may be where you want to pull that from rather than the ARPA.
Okay.
Uh, and as far as general fund, I, I, again, for the same reason that we cannot necessarily utilize general fund for some of these for the nonprofit hospital, again, not an attorney, need to talk to attorney Danzo. I would question on a lot of these. Now the road ones, maybe. But again, that's something that you guys need to talk about. I think it's premature. I think waiting to see what shakes out in the next couple of days.
Okay.
All right. That's my opinion.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you. And speaking of ARPA, Commissioner French, go, where are the checks from last week? We signed three checks to present to communities. You took two of them home.
Actually, I didn't, I didn't even get to sign.
And you got on the elevator and took them with you. So Fowler Township and Hubbard City's checks, did you bring them back so we can go and present them?
Uh, see, that's, that's where there's like um a little bit of missing, competing information. So last week you said, or that week, that week you said that um they were going to be presented at council. Um, that's what you said. Now today.
September 3rd.
Oh, so that's what I, that's, and then yesterday you said that they were going to come here to get their check. And then on um, and then when I spoke to Lisa, she said they were coming here to get the checks. So when there was like misinformation and one person.
Why did you, why would you make? Or even signing it? Were you planning on presenting yourself?
Signed. And, and um I tried to get you to sign it and you just walked away from me. So e- either way.
Why would I not?
You could look at the video, uh, you could look at the video when I, uh, surveillance because I walked there and I hate walking.
You, you never did that. That's a complete lie, but thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner, you went to Kinsman with, and got a picture with the engineer giving an ARPA check he had nothing to do with. And then you took these two checks probably to go pose again, lobby for a job for yourself when you're out of office. It would, and pose again. Why would you take the checks home with you?
So again, I'm, I, what I want to say is, I mean, after you calling and um be- being nasty to the community and say, and to the engineer or whoever, saying that you didn't, you didn't get an invite that we received an email three times.
Um, what does that have anything to do with Fowler and Hubbard's checks? I talked to the mayor there, the schedule for us to come and do a presentation. I talked to Fowler Township trustees to get a schedule for us to come to a township meeting.
But you didn't convey that at the meeting at all.
The president of the board, I can do things and do that and then let us know. I said, we will be presenting the checks. We'll get them to them in upcoming weeks.
You said.
What I said. And you said, no, I'll take the check and sneak it on the elevator myself.
Actually, she didn't say anything. She just took it on the elevator.
Two different things. And quite frankly, because you say one thing and do another and say things and change your mind, it, it's, it's really difficult to have faith and.
You thought you could just take the checks and take them home.
Okay.
So I, then why'd you take the checks? We're waiting for an answer.
Is there, because you did not say that. So is there a date? Is there a date scheduled for that?
Yeah, the mayor of council, Ben, Ben, Ben Cowell said we can come to his council meeting, September 3rd and present it. That would be a good time.
This needs to be, uh, again.
But I said, I don't know. Commissioner Frenchgo stole the check. I don't know if we can do it or not.
Just as we do with other, with.
$18 apiece we pay for them. County property.
You, yesterday you said that everyone who receives money has to come here and.
I did not say that.
Yes, you did.
And you didn't even tell anybody you took them. You just got on the elevator and took them.
Until someone saw you and then asked you and then caught you. You put it on your back and got on the elevator.
Okay.
You're still not given an answer why you took it. You could say, okay, 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 all you want. You stole two checks. Where are they?
You were going to, you said something about presenting it at council and then there was something said about it being uh them coming here to, to have. Because if they don't come here, they're not going to get their checks.
Okay, so, so you took them out of here so they couldn't come here to get home.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not going to do this, but.
Caught with your hand in a cookie jar and your excuses are, are like asking a five-year-old kid that has crumbs all over the front of the cookie. Nope, wasn't me. That's not, wasn't me. I didn't have the checks.
I wanted to confirm.
I wanted to keep them safe. I wanted to take them home and keep them safe.
I wanted to verify the facts because.
I was gonna go home and iron them and make it, get the creases out of them and then bring them back. Where are they?
There's absolutely no reason. At least tell somebody you're taking.
Yeah, at least, at least admit, yes, I took the checks and I was going to go and try to get a picture.
Commissioners, commissioners, I did try to get the checks off of her. She stepped on the elevator. The doors opened and she stepped on.
Okay.
You know you did. I told you that those were for all three of you to present.
You said they were coming here to get them.
I said, I need the checks back.
You said they're coming here to get them.
And she even said Commissioner Cantal Mesa hasn't even signed them.
All three of you to present, not just you.
Right. I didn't, okay. So when, that's not.
So you thought it was just you.
Yes, it was. Those for all three. Either way, this is.
Either way, I got caught.
People saying different stories. It, what you need to do.
I'm taking the checks home. That shouldn't be your story.
This is a common practice where you guys do things and.
Oh, it's a common practice that we take found equipment home and keep it safe.
Right.
Never gonna say, I took them home. I'm sorry.
She can't. She can't admit to anything she's ever done wrong, ever in her life. She never says she's sorry and she never admits it, ever.
You were.
We're on to you. The community's on to you.
Consulting 90-year-old people yesterday at the meeting and people were taken aback by your comment about. Yeah.
90-year-old people?
Yeah, like houses smelling.
Deflect. Narcissists do that. They deflect.
Saying is.
Subject.
They change the subject. They deflect. They place blame. Narcissists.
Right.
If nothing else.
Yeah, there's nothing else. It sounds like relevant.
Yeah, we, we, I would ask on behalf of the board and all the citizens of Trumbull County, can you please return the county property? So we as a group can present them where they need to go.
I would like to know, again, let me say that before in the past, when there was information or there was a presentation of something, there have been times that, that I have been omitted, that people have not CC'd me on emails, that people have uh completely.
So you're omitting us?
That's not true.
That's not true.
Just, so, does he invited Randy Smith to go to Kinsman and present it and not us?
No one invited Randy Smith any, anywhere except for probably the trustees because they actually engineered the project. Did you think of that? Because they saved the cap, they saved the community money.
Not what you write upset on your social media.
Okay. Wow. Maybe. So I would like to know when we're signing them, put at least a, a post-it with the time and date of when they're going to be presented because I thought they were all going to be here until you said what you said at the meeting.
Mr. Kyle was on vacation. He couldn't be here.
Again, why would you take them home?
Yeah, why would you take them home then?
Just leave them here.
I, you know, I've also been to places where I, I have gone and they've said Commissioner Cantal Mesa is going to be the one to present it. I have gone on two occasions where you weren't there and you didn't bring it with you. And then I was the only commissioner there and felt stupid because I was supposed to be.
What occasions were those?
So do you have them in your car in case Mr. Kyle showed up today?
In particular was the Pinwell uh presentation of a resolution.
Those are resolutions that we all sign. I didn't even get to sign this.
That I was told that you were going to go and, and you were going to be the one taking it. And I went there empty-handed with the commissioners on the agenda in order to present something and you didn't show up. So that is.
Did your father to ask me if I was going?
It was said in a meeting that you were going. You said it. He said she, Commissioner Cantal Mesa is going to be going and presenting it.
Well, maybe we had a public meeting and workshop and we decided as a majority of the board, who was going to go and do it and you weren't there.
No, you said who was going to go and do it at a public meeting and it was him and he didn't show up and I went there and felt dumb. So the.
You don't feel dumb. You just show up and, and you.
I did.
If you were.
We were on.
Commissioner, you were, you went to Kinsman and presented an ARPA check that you didn't even sign and vote for. You didn't even sign the resolution to give with the Kinsman, the arson check. There's two. And you went and presented the check with engineer Randy Smith and presented the check and smiled. Look what we did for your community and you didn't even sign it. You didn't even vote on it. Look at it. You didn't even sign the resolution to give up the money. That's disgraceful. And now you're taking checks to go try to get credit, the public's credit for the ARPA money yourself. That's what you were going to do. We all know it.
That's not true. Okay.
Yeah, you're just. We just seen you on Facebook or something with a big smile. Look what I did for Fowler Township. Look what I did for Hubbard.
About making sure that people come to the county to get their checks in person. And if, if they don't, if they, if you don't get a photo op and they're not going to get their, their check.
That was never said. You're absolutely wrong.
So if you said that, why would you take them home?
You said that yesterday.
I never said that one time yesterday.
That's what you said.
No, I said, we were going to present it as a board.
You said moving forward, no one's going to get their money unless they come and get.
We said we can't trust you anymore. So we're not going to sign checks and leave them laying around until the people are here or until we go to where they are. That's what I said. You have a habit of taking the place. With you. We never see it again.
Right, okay. That's why you don't want to actually.
Anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County?
What you said.
Clearly, we're not getting our checks back. We'll ask our uh clerk to make up two more checks. We'll schedule a presentation where the majority of the board could be there and we'll present the checks Hubbard and Fowler Township.
So if Amy can put those on our schedule or give us invites so that everyone is.
Oh, we'll make sure you're invited to go. You're just not going to be allowed to, to carry the check with you. It's going to be in safe hands.
Okay. Like if, if I, the community took that one to um, to Kinsman and I was the only one there. So if the commissioners were to be taking that out there, it wouldn't have been there. So just understand.
Kinsman already had the check. We sent them home with it that day.
Right. So if, if it's going somewhere else and then no commissioner show up and I'm the only one, like what happened with the resolutions, it's.
It's to present a check that you didn't sign for, you didn't approve.
I did approve it. Okay. All right.
Okay. We got it. We're, we're.
Everybody clear on that?
Everybody's clear on that.
Yes, I voted and I work with the communities too.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for the good in the room? All right, we, we will. Let's do it. Why, what the hell? Let's do it. Let's go to the calls today. We'll take a couple. Hit star six if you'd like to be unmuted.
You got someone on there?
I don't know. We'll see.
So if you're going to do it, it should be consistent because I know last week there were people called that didn't get an opportunity to speak.
Well, we're giving them an opportunity now. They got a couple of seconds. We don't have to give an opportunity to talk on the phone. They can, the meetings are public meetings. They can come here and be heard.
All right, hearing none. I'll make a motion adjourned.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. French, Kyle?
Yes.